Oh, really? Yes.
Really?
Oh, yes.
I'll have to try that out. Now, of course, I have to buy some Thin Mints. Don't have any of those. We've got lemon cream. Not my favorite.
Yep. We'll call tonight's meeting to order. We now do have a quorum. The mayor's out of town tonight, and he should be back at our next meeting. We'll start with invocation by myself and then pledge to the American and Texas flags by Girl Scout Troop 973.
Please rise.
If you could join me in a moment of silence, please. We have Girl Scout Troop 973. You can start when you're ready.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor Texas flag, and pledge to the Constitution and its essence, one state under God, one in the visual.
Thank you. It was nice to hear everybody participating tonight. Let me read the last thing. Rosalyn? Okay. Come around here. Okay. And Thales Bedford. I've got a proclamation. Whereas the City Council of Louisville is pleased to recognize the Girl Scouts of Northeast Texas on the special occasion of the 100th anniversary of the Girl Scouts of the USA. And whereas believing that all girls should be provided opportunities to develop physically, mentally, and spiritually, Juliette Daisy Gordon Lowe assembled 18 girls from Savannah, Georgia on March 12, 1912, for a local Girl Scout meeting. From the beginning, diversity was a core value of Girl Scouting, and girls from all cultural and socioeconomic backgrounds were a part of the Girl Scouts. Today, the Girl Scouts of the USA has a membership of nearly 3 million girls and adults. And whereas Girl Scouts of Northeast Texas serves nearly 35,000 girls and 17,000 volunteers in 32 counties in Northeast Texas, it is truly deserving of recognition for continuing a tradition of fostering leadership among its participants. And whereas Girl Scouts is the world's premier leadership development organization for girls and build girls of courage, confidence, and character who make the world a better place. Now, therefore, I, Rudy Durham, Mayor Pro Tem of the Louisville City Council, do hereby extend special recognition to Girl Scouts of Northeast Texas on its 100th anniversary, proclaim this 16th day of April, 2012.
So, Mayor Pro Tem Durham and City Council members, on behalf of all of the Girl Scouts here this evening and those who could not make it, we want to thank you so much for this proclamation and recognition of Girl Scouts 100th anniversary and for all that the city has done in support of Girl Scouts. So, thank you.
We'll thank all the scouts for being here, too. It's nice to see you. If we can have Charlene Collins come up? Yeah. Whereas 23 million Americans are victims of crime each year, and of those, 5.2 million are victims of violent crime. And whereas a just society acknowledges crime's impact on individuals, families, and communities by ensuring that rights, resources, and services are available to help rebuild lives. And whereas victims' rights are a critical component of the promise of justice for all, the foundation for a system of justice in America. And whereas observing victims' rights and treating victims with dignity and respect serves the public interest by engaging victims in the justice system, inspiring respect for public authorities, and promoting confidence in public safety. And whereas we must do better to ensure services are available for underserved segments of our population, including crime victims with disabilities, victims with mental illness, and victims who are teenagers, victims who are elderly, victims in rural areas, and victims in communities of color. And whereas America recognizes that we make our homes, neighborhoods, and communities safer and stronger by serving victims of crime and ensuring justice for all. Now, therefore, I, Rudy Durham, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Louisville, Texas, do hereby proclaim the week of May 22 through, excuse me, April 22 through April 28, 2012, as Denton County Victims' Rights Week. Further, I urge all citizens and institutions, public and private, to support the establishment and enforcement of victims' rights and services through participation in appropriate state and local activities during the designated week with the theme of extending victims' rights, reaching every victim. Proclaim this 16th day of April, 2012. Did want to say, she did want to especially mention the police department, Louisville Police Department in this. Larry Apple. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas Louisville has been recognized as Tree City, USA, by the National Arbor Day Foundation, and desires to continue its tree planting ways. And whereas recognizing that forests provide habitats to about two-thirds of all species on Earth, and sustainable management of all types of forest is beneficial. 2011 has been declared the International Year of the Forest. Now, therefore, I, Rudy Durham, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Louisville, Texas, and on behalf of the Louisville City Council, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 27, 2012, as Arbor Day in the City of Louisville, and urge all citizens to support efforts to care for our trees and woodlands, and to support our city's community forestry program. And I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations. Proclaim this 16th day of April, 2012. Is that it? Thank you. That's it? Now, we're into public hearings. Number one, public hearing, consideration of an ordinance for a zone change request from light industrial to specific use district zoning for an indoor gun range at, on 1.147 acres, located at the proposed lot 2R1, Block B, Valley Ridge Business Park, East Edition, as requested by Eagle Gun Range Incorporated, on behalf of the property owner. Subject property is currently located at, presently, excuse me, the subject property is presently located at 501 West Valley Ridge Boulevard, Building Number Two. The site contains two buildings which will be separated into two distinct lots through the replating process. The property is currently zoned light industrial and surrounded by light zoning to the east, west, and south, and the Kansas City Southern Railroad Line to the north. Rezoning to specific use is required due to the unique nature of the request and the absence of specific criteria in the zoning ordinance. There is one variance requested relating to parking that the owners addressing via a reciprocal parking agreement. Staff, including the police department, reviewed a comprehensive site plan illustrating the applicant's plans for converting the existing building to an indoor gun range. The P&amp;Z Commission recommended approval of the zoning request by a vote of 5-0 at their March 20, 2012, meeting. Recommendation is that the City Council approve the proposed ordinance amending the Louisville City Code, Chapter 17, the comprehensive zoning ordinance as set forth in the caption above.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Pro Tem, members of the council.
Can you give us your name and address for the record?
Tony Felker, 8404 Warren Parkway, Frisco, Texas, 75034. I think there are a lot of other people here that'll speak on the specifics of the property and the technicalities of this. I wanted just to just say a few words, and keep it very brief, just about the man, or as it was pointed out to me, the man as well as the woman behind the man that's going to be operating this operation. I work at the Frisco Chamber of Commerce, had the pleasure of knowing David Prince for many years, both as a board member, as a chairman, as a committee member, seen him around in the community, served with him on City Council in Frisco, and can just speak about if he wants to get involved in a community, he's going to step forward and do well by the community, believes in the community that he's working in and being a part of, and speak very highly of that. I mentioned the woman behind the man. This is going to be a family operation. You can bet that if he steps out of line one bit, she's going to be right behind him, keeping him in line and in check. So, he believes in the community that he's involved in and speaks very highly of them, known him for many years, and it'll be a true asset for the community. I believe this is something that'll be regional in nature, and from speaking to many people about this type of operation, it's one that's very much needed in this area and will be very well supported and appreciate your support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Brenda Latham.
Brenda Latham, 1553 Parkside Trail, Louisville, Texas. Been in Louisville my entire life, and I am so excited about the opportunity to have a first-class anything but a gun range in Louisville. I know it's not a thrift store, but this is going to generate so much positive for Louisville. It's going to generate large amounts of traffic. And I can tell you, as a shooter, I have to drive a really long way to a eh, gun range just west of here. This is going to be first-class. I am super impressed with the homework and the research that they have done, the fact that they have gone out to all of the surrounding neighbors in the area where the gun range is going to be located, to tell them, this is what we're doing, to see what the neighbors have any concerns or issues with, and none of us do. We're excited. This is going to put Louisville on the map for a positive reason. I know a gun range may sound strange to some of y'all, but I'm telling you, this is going to be big. So, I urge you all to please support Louisville having a first-class gun range. Thanks.
Thank you. Jerry Rayburn.
Well, I didn't know I was going to speak, but I will. I'm very much in favor of this. As most of you probably know, I'm very active in the shooting sports.
Jerry, could you give us your?
I'm sorry. Jerry Rayburn, 2021 Aspen Drive, Louisville.
Thank you.
As you know, I'm very active in the shooting sports, police instructor, concealed carry instructor. I've been involved in things like this for about 30 years, and I agree with Brenda, this will bring a lot of people to Louisville. I think it'll be an extremely well-run operation. I'm looking forward to having the opportunity to use it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. We have David Hodgson that is in support of this but doesn't wish to speak, but will answer any questions. Do you have any staff comments on this? Nothing? Anybody else wish to speak on this? Yes, sir. Come on. Have your name and address for the record.
And is this the time for applicants to speak now, or would you rather?
Right now? Be fine.
My name is David Prince. I've lived for the last seven years at 6032 Osage in Denton County in the city of Frisco. I have a small presentation to give, if that's okay with the commissioner and the council members.
I think it'll be fine. We just need to have you fill out a form when you get through.
Sorry.
That's power. You're going to want the, you don't want, monitor.
He said, "Ask for the overhead." I got it on the computer, but you don't have the plug.
Yeah, good. Is that what happened?
Heard it.
As you can see, this is our presentation showing you the lot that's going to be over on Valley Ridge, and we're carving out the position from a large group into one building. Their planning and zoning has asked us to replat it, and this is what this particular slide represents. Our zoning, it was existing as light and industrial, and we're now asking it to be a special use zoning. And I think this was part of the whole process that we presented through planning and zoning, and they were in agreement to replat the property. You can see the parking spaces. We've addressed that issue and have, I think has been mentioned in report, that there's been a reciprocal agreement with the rest of the property owners. The Dinkman Interest owns all these buildings and has been gracious enough to give us a parking reciprocal agreement. We should have plenty of space. As you can see, the name of the gun range is going to be Eagle Gun Range, and we've, go ahead and turn that next page for me. As you can see, our mission statement is to foster the development of all shooting sports by providing opportunities for members and their families to receive shooting instructions by providing a safe venue for shooting, by promoting fellowship and good sportsmanship while keeping firearm safety the paramount in the pursuit of all these endeavors. We are going to be a gun range, but we are also a training and education center. It's our desire to educate anybody that's never used a gun, that is willing to use a gun. It's important that we feel like there is a right to bear arms, but it's also your responsibility to learn how to use one effectively and responsibly. During our looking to put a gun range in, demographics was important, whether this area could support another gun range or not. And as you can see from the overhead, there are 6.5 million people in the North Texas Council of Government. There's only eight gun ranges that are in that area. As you can see, Denton County has grown, what is that, 56%? 53% in the last 10 years? That's the third-largest increase in the entire North Texas Council of Governments. We've also taken the time to list out where all the eight gun ranges are, and you can see that there is not one gun range in Denton County. Those other gun ranges are well-spread out, but as I said, there's only eight gun ranges serving 6.5 million. We feel like there's plenty of population to allow us to put this gun range in here in Louisville. Also, I'm sorry, you'll see that those are driving distance, the different colors represent the driving distance. You'll see why in a minute, and I'm going to say that there are a lot of, there are millions of shooters that are willing to drive past these eight gun ranges, and I'll tell you why in a second. But the outside ring is one-hour driving distance. The green zone is a 30-minute driving distance, and the red zone is 15-minute driving distance. As you can see, that encompasses well over 5 million people. Like to draw your attention to our floor plan, just to make certain that you see that there is ballistic walls. This is a tilt-wall building with seven inches of concrete. The ballistic wall that we're going to be putting in is going to be concrete-filled CMU blocks with steel reinforcement. And the, so that will provide 15 inches of protection of concrete that the bullets would have to penetrate before it gets to the outside of the building. Our top of the building, well, you'll see classrooms, there are two classrooms in there, an administrative area and sales area. So, we feel like we're designing probably one of the most state-of-the-art facilities in the state of Texas. Next screen, as you're going to see, is just some of our particular equipment we're putting in. Action Target, who actually was one of the vendors that put in y'all's police department range, will be doing our ballistic equipment. There's just some showing of some of the type of equipment we'll be putting in, individual shooting booth. Each one of those booths is capable of stopping a .308 or a .50 caliber shot that happens to be accidentally discharged, so our shooters will be safe. Our public will be safe because of the concrete walls, and our employees will be safe, and I'll show you in a minute. Here's an aerial view of the top looking down of the different, 24 different lanes. Back in the far right-hand side of your screen is going to be a ballistic bullet trap, it's going to be made up of 111,000 pounds of granulated rubber. It was capable, I think there's another slide that shows you, you can see the angle. You'll see that this has been geometrically designed, that at the lowest point, somebody laying on the floor, if they were to shoot, those baffles at the top are designed that there could be no bullet ever escape the range through the ceiling. There is a static shooting position, there will be no one downrange. So, public safety is paramount, as well as shooter safety. You can see at the, at the angle that the bullet will come in, there's about four feet of rubber that's going to be catching that bullet. It's designed to withstand a .50 caliber rifle shot that won't go through. We have pictures of the rubber berm, actual berm. You'll see people in there mining the lead, will be mining the lead every 80,000 to 100,000 rounds, depending on the size of the bullets and the activities going on in there, that will have an outside vendor. These are also screenshots of typical ranges that are already in existence that Action Target put in, the baffling down the range and the acoustic ceilings and things. A rear view of it, the real elevation, really from the north side of the building, you can see, this is one of the premier pieces that we're trying to, that will attract, I told you earlier, that there will be millions of people coming past other existing ranges, and it will be for this one purpose. We're putting in over half million dollars of air conditioning and ventilation into this range. There is no other range in the state of Texas, no other commercial indoor range in the state of Texas will have this equipment. We'll be the only one that's air-conditioned for the general public to come in. It's going to be ventilated. Every 80 seconds, this air will be purged. The next screen will show you just typically some of the equipment we're putting in. This is one of the four pieces of equipment. On the bottom right is a diffuser that's going to be taking a general flow of air. Top right, you're going to see how the smoke is being pulled away from the shooters down range. There will be no vortex, no massive amount of air being pushed down to somebody's neck. You'll have a general .8 degree, 8 mile per hour wind flow past the shooter. Our shooters will be safe, our customers will be safe, our employees will be safe because of the ventilation system. We've met and exceeded all governmental requirements and regulations, and I'm available for any questions.
Council, any questions? Thank you.
Yes, I do.
Yes, sir.
On the, on the parking issue.
Yes, sir.
I understand there's an agreement between this business and the other property that's all currently owned by the same owner.
Yes, sir.
So, what happens with the parking if the ownership changes hands of one of these buildings? What happens with your agreement?
I can answer that question, but I think we have, what, 57 places, 48 places that are designed, and my landlord is here, and I can answer that question as well, but it's in contractual, there is a reciprocal contractual agreement that I have with my lease, and I believe it would be transferable, that contingent liability would follow with the sale of the property. If that property is sold, it's with all the contingent liabilities, including my lease and, and the, well, there's other reasons for, if you happen to be taking of the land for any reason. It's all built into our lease, that that particular lease agreement will, parking agreement will carry forward.
Okay. And my only other question was in regards?
I'm sorry, one other thing is that, right, thanks, Bobby. Most of our time, our busiest point would be Saturdays and Sundays, which are typically off busy time for any of the other businesses that would be in that area.
Yeah, I was just more concerned about if the property changes hands.
Yes, sir.
That the agreement still stood.
Yes, sir.
And the other thing was the noise. When I was reading the background information, the police chief and someone else indicated, you know, that they didn't anticipate any noise issue. But, for instance, if there was complaints about the noise, can you give me some kind of idea of what it would take, you or Bobby, to mitigate that, or have you thought about that?
Yes, sir, I have. We have, we've talked with Troy Acoustical, who has done the Louisville Police Range. They were instrumental in providing acoustics for that and reducing complaints. We have them, and we also have Acoustical Solutions that we've talked with. We are putting in acoustical tile in our range, all in the backside where the shooters are actually, and we're going to have those. The range can be retrofitted if we do not comply, or we're going to be, first, we're going to be bound by city ordinance as to sound. I'm also bound by contract, my lease calls for if sound is heard inside the building next to us, I have to mitigate and reduce that sound. So, I'm contractually bound by even more so than the ordinance. It'll be quieter than what the ordinance needs. So, I'll have, you know, a lot of reasons to make sure.
There are steps you can take.
Yes, sir. We can retrofit it and add in. Yes, sir, we can retrofit it and add in blankets and acoustical blankets and other things.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
That's all.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Staff, anything we had on that? Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close. Second.
We have a motion, Ms. Gilmore, second by Mr. Carina. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion closed, he's unanimous. Any discussion?
I'm just glad they're here. I'm an avid shooter and it looks like it's a really good, really good range, like the design.
Well, do we have a motion there?
Motion to approve, or excuse me, there's two there we have to look at. Motion to approve the changes to the ordinance and motion to approve the variance for the parking.
Second.
We have a motion, the second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Oh, wait.
Oh, excuse me, guest counselor. Somebody wrote it on my paper right here, it didn't do that.
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas that amends the zoning ordinance of the City of Lewisville, Texas, granting zoning changes on the 1.147 acre tract of land, fully and completely described in the attached Exhibit A, ordering a change in the use of said property from light industrial district zoning to specific use district zoning for an indoor gun range, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, providing a clause relating to severability, determining that the public interests and general welfare demand a zoning change and amendment therein made, providing a penalty and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Prince, could, could you come up here for just one second? I, I need, I need to fix something real quick.
You'd need a different pen on your jacket, sir.
What's his pen say?
Says Frisco.
Just trading pens like in the Olympics.
I got a couple of those.
Another public hearing. Consideration of an ordinance for a zone change request from agricultural open space to public use zoning district on 8.29 acres, bounded by Parkway Drive to the south, Mill Street to the west and Keely Avenue to the east. Further identified as proposed Lot 1 Block A, Lewisville Rodeo Grounds addition, as requested by the City of Lewisville, the property owner. Case number PG 20120405. Administrative comments. Public governmental agency uses are permitted in all zoning districts, although the agency must follow the general regulations of the district on which the use is located. Public use zoning will allow for better utilization of the Lewisville Rodeo Grounds by providing more flexible development standards and accurately reflecting the property's use. The city is currently in the process of upgrading the facility, including replacement of the existing spectator stands, paving ADA facility, ADA compliant walkways onsite and providing a handicap accessible parking area. Improvements are scheduled to take place over the summer months and be completed in time for the Labor Day weekend festivities. The P&amp;Z Commission recommended approval of the zoning request by a vote of 5-0 at their April 3, 2012 meeting. Recommendation is that the city staff approve the proposed ordinance amending the Lewisville City Code, Chapter 17, the comprehensive zoning ordinance as set forth in the caption above. I don't have any cards on this, does staff have anything?
We don't have any presentation.
Okay. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Carina, second by Councilman Gilmore. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Councilman Gilmore.
Move to approve the zone change for the rodeo grounds. If I could speak.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, the second. Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas that amends the zoning ordinance of the City of Lewisville, Texas, granting zoning changes on the 8.29 acre tract of land, fully and completely described in the attached Exhibit A, ordering a change in the use of said property from agricultural open space district zoning to public use district zoning, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, providing a clause relating to severability, determining that the public interests and general welfare demand a zoning change and amendment therein made, providing a penalty and declaring an emergency.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Next item is the visitor's residence forum. At this time, any person with business before the council, not scheduled on the agenda, may speak to the council. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. First card I have up is John Music. Sir, if you could give your name and address for the record, please.
John Music, 1382 College Parkway, Lewisville. I've lived here basically my whole entire life. My family moved here from Michigan when I was four and I love Lewisville. We haven't moved away, everything's been perfect, so no complaints there. Wasn't really planning on speaking tonight, so I apologize if any of my arguments or anything seem unprofessional or whatever, this is obviously my first time speaking before City Council. Not a big issue, just recently in the month of February, I don't know, I'm assuming you've all seen one of these before, it's the water bill for the City of Lewisville. We did not receive a mailed bill for the month of February and my mother is in her 60s, handles, you know, the books for the entire household, that's probably 20, 30 bills, so just didn't happen to notice it. Don't know if that was a mix-up in the mail or a problem with the water department, not really a big issue. So, we received the following bill for the month of March, which mentioned for that month's bill as well as the past due amount, which, once again, this isn't really a big deal. I mean, we didn't have problems paying the water. For the last 20 years we've lived in the house, I don't think we've had one late payment, so no problems there, didn't mind paying those. Only problem we had was up here at the top, left-hand corner, where it says current amount due is for both months and it has a date of 4/12. Most people when they open up the bill, look at this top half only, look at the date and write out their check and mail it in perfectly fine, but because we didn't receive a bill for February, there was an additional special statement here in the bottom, put in very, very tiny print, mentioning that if the past due amount wasn't paid by April 3, which is nine days before the due date placed at the top, water would be cut off, which I completely understand, I know that's legal and there's nothing wrong with cutting off water for past due payments on a bill. But, my only complaint here is why is this date different from the top date? And that just seems, quite honestly, like a revenue grab by the city. It's a way to trick people into having to pay a $25 fee, which is, by the way, is, there's no mention of that on here. That was my surprise when we woke up this morning and I went to shower for work and it wouldn't work, so immediately mom wrote out the check really quickly, came to City Hall, went to pay the bill and that's when they notified us of the $25 fee. You know, a $25 fee, that's fine, I don't have a problem with that at all, people probably should be paying a fee. However, the only problem I have is it just seems very shady that there's two separate dates. It's almost as if they expect people to go nine days without water completely and then, okay, your due date is the 12th. So, it just seems like almost a deliberate way to collect an additional $25 on revenue for people that make an accidental mistake in paying their water bills. So, like I said, I know it's probably all perfectly legal and fine and it's works for most people and I don't necessarily expect anything to be done about it, but I just thought it was something that maybe needed to be brought up as attention in the City Council and you can consider it and maybe look into it and see if really that's necessary, if maybe there should be a change made in just simply putting this date towards the top part so that people are inconvenienced and charged a $25 fee, which a lot of people, I'm sure, would be much more upset than I am. So, I don't really have anything else, I just thought that should be brought to your attention and I do thank you for your time.
Somebody, hopefully somebody can talk to you right now. Sir, if you can just wait a second. Go ahead, they'll have somebody talk to you right now. Thank you.
I've had to have my wife explain that to me several times too, so...
And the only comment staff would have is that I can assure you that there's no deliberate attempt to gouge people out of a collection fee. Those collection fees are more problematic to collect in the original bill itself, so the last thing we do is promote more collection fees.
I, I think his concern was that it could be a little more clear when things are due. We can look at the bill.
I would have been confused too, because I just look at the top also. We have another card here from Kelly Boswell and Brian Bridges. If you could give us your name and address for the record, please.
Brian Bridges, 1572 Barxdale Drive. Got an incident there that the HOA has some complaints about people cutting through from Valley Ridge onto Garden Ridge. So, they were speeding and the resolution they had, I guess the traffic engineers came out, they were there for about 10 minutes, observed it and put stop signs right in front of our yard, which is basically blocking our entire front of the house, it's a zero lot line, we have no place to park now. I'm there, I see, there hasn't been one accident, there hasn't been anything that would, other than a few people in the neighborhood getting tired of people cutting through. They put the stop signs there. I'm just proposing, you know, there's a 25 mile an hour speed limit when you come through there, they could put a no, no cut through. I talked to the traffic engineer, he said I would have to come before y'all to, you know, propose this to be implemented. I mean, to be a win-win, it's going to, it's going to give us our front of the house, we can park again. There's an alley, which if you, the alleyways are small, to put vehicles in there, it's pretty tight, you know. And if it continues to be a problem with cut through, you know, they can, at that point, they can put an officer down there, they can create revenue for the city with citations if they're doing that. So, I mean, it's just an option maybe to help us out and win-win with the city making some money on revenue and...
Could you supply this?
Yeah, I've got more if y'all want.
Let's hand bring some over here, we'll just hand them out here.
Is there anything on the staff?
Yeah, well, okay. Put us looking into this. Thank you, sir. There's one for you there. Next item is consent agenda. Anybody else wish to speak for the council? No, I didn't have any other cards. Okay. Next item is consent agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizens so request, or citizens if they request the removal of an item. Speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. I don't have any cards on that. Councilman Ferguson?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now to regular hearings, number seven. Consideration of variance to the Lewisville City Code, Section 6-54, Section 107, temporary structures and uses regarding two temporary buildings for classroom use to be located at 1010 Bel Air Boulevard, as requested by William Chandler, the facilities operations manager, representing the owner. Administrative comments. Vista Academy of Lewisville, a private school desires to locate two temporary classrooms on the existing property located at 1010 Bel Air Boulevard. An engineering site plan is not required. The site is compliant with the general development ordinance requests, requirements in 2001. The City of Lewisville Building Code does not allow portable buildings to be placed in the city for purposes of this type, other than on LISD property. The academy is requesting to place the temporary classrooms for a period of eight to 10 years. Recommendation is that the city council consider the request for variance, provided that the temporary classrooms be removed in 10 years or until such time, should the academy build a new school or addition. Presentation is by Mr. Joyner, building official, and let's hear from the city staff first on that. Do you have anything? Do you have anything you want? Oh...
He's asking you, Clay.
Cliff?
He can walk you through it if you need some detail.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions of the city staff on this one?
No.
At this time?
No.
Nope? Okay. And I have a card from Mr. Chandler, did you want to speak?
I'll let him press his question.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions of the applicant? Councilman Vaughn?
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the application as presented.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve as requested. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Consideration of four variances to the Lewisville City Code, Section 6-103E, access management auxiliary lanes, B, Section 6-123, non-residential landscaping, C, Section 6-144, screening, and D, Section 6-162, parking for Lot 1 Block A, Lewisville Plaza Phase 2, a 6.92 acre lot zoned local commercial located near the northwest quadrant of Fox Avenue and Edmonds Lane, requested by the owner-operator of Twice the Ice, proposing an ice kiosk on the lot. Comments are that the owner of the lot, owners of the lot are proposing to lease space within the existing parking lot for placement of an ice kiosk. Because the kiosk will require new water and sewer services, the GDO will require a new site plan. The lot is currently occupied by Terry's Bazaar and a commercial ballroom. Four variances, variances including a deceleration lane and right-of-way dedication on Fox Avenue required landscaping, screening and parking have been identified by the staff and the applicant has applied for the variances based on the proposed site plan. The same variances were considered in 2007 for a different ice kiosk proposal on this site. However, the application was ultimately withdrawn. A similar site plan for an ice kiosk was approved with landscaping variances at the CCA site on Business 121 in 2006. Staff recommends denial due to proliferated considerations and proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance. Recommendation is that the city council deny the variance for Lot 1 Block A, Lewisville Plaza Phase 2, as set forth in the caption above. Any comments from the staff?
Counsel, I think that the recommendation speaks for itself. I think what we're really asking you to do is deny this or the minimum, postpone it until after you have considered, and the P&amp;Z has considered amendments to the zoning ordinance that would deal with this type of proposed use and secondary use and secondary structure. As we talked at the retreat this past year, the retail market in Lewisville has some differences compared to other marketplaces surrounding us and we want to make sure that some of these secondary uses don't begin to proliferate in a way that detracts from the Lewisville market. We're concerned about the very wide variety of potential secondary uses that you could have in these structures. We haven't had a whole lot of it in the past, but the marketplace is different and we're beginning to see requests for things like, not just donuts or taco stands, but can and bottle recycling, the aforementioned ice vendors, you could see virtually any secondary You could see virtually any secondary use that is allowable in a zoning category established in one of these kiosks. You could have the beer, wine, cigarettes, payday, loans, the whole nine yards. So, we'd like to have the P and Z take a look at that and make some kind of recommendation to the council, let you decide how you want to treat it in the future, so that you can treat it consistently. Perhaps that should have been done back in 2006, but I just don't think that it was perceived as as big a potential problem as we see it today. So, that's the reason for the staff recommendation.
Well, sorry, Mayor.
Go ahead. Questions for staff?
I was thinking about a lot of these things here. Yeah, I don't want to, I'd like to see it go to the P and Z committee and have them look at it a little bit better, because I'm thinking of all these different things that are popping up, like the water, the place that dispenses water over there at the, now Louisville Plaza, it used to be the Houghine Plaza, and, you know, they're all solid structures. So if we're gonna, if we're gonna deny this, this is gonna be a policy change. I think, I'm gonna recommend to the council, if no one has any problems, but to let this, as the city manager suggested, go to the P and Z board and see if we can get them to do a little more research on this and get back to us.
Okay.
That was your recommendation, sir, wasn't it?
The recommendation is denial, and it wouldn't affect anybody's ability to reapply once the new regulation is in place. They can always come back and apply. I mean, that's what it would be for, so...
How, if we postpone this and, instead of denying or approving it, if we postpone this and get it to the P and Z, how soon can that decision be made?
Well, I think it's gonna take a little while for the P and Z. The problem with that is that you're still gonna have to deal with this case...
Gotcha.
...after the P and Z modifications are made.
All right, then, I'll go ahead and...
If we could, before we get any further on this, I just want to stay here. Mr. Ray Ibarra is here. Do you want to come up and speak, sir? Okay. He is in, you are the applicant?
Pardon?
You are the applicant for the ice?
Yes.
Okay. If I could give your name and address for the record, please?
Ray Ibarra, 455 Sweetbrier Drive, Louisville, Texas.
Go ahead.
And I understand what you guys are talking about. I think this is, I've seen, I represent the distributor for these ice houses. I've seen the one on 121. It's a little bit embarrassing, but this is, I guess, how do we turn this on?
He's coming around to help you out, sir. You have the overhead, Tim?
This is our new design to these ice kiosks. It's not your typical kiosk, it's not like a clothing drop-off box, collects old couches and beat-up bassinets, or that small water kiosk. This is 200 square feet, it's open 24 hours for the, that area, lots of blue-collar workers. It just seems like the ideal location, lots of business. Here's another view from the side. If anything, this might set a new standard for what the kiosk should look like moving forward, if, if, if it's not gonna be dealt, if, if we're trying to keep them out of Louisville. But this is a nice-looking building, way better-looking builder than, building than what is in that area now. See, here's the other side. All stucco, real stone, standing seam metal roof. And I'd just like for you guys to consider the variances on this one, so we could get this building set there and start serving the community in that area.
Is, is it my understanding that we had requests for four variances? So was there, my apologies, was there any, any negotiation, was there any attempt to meet us halfway on some of those?
We could meet, it just depends on, some of the variances, like a right-turn deceleration lane, that's a, and then the right-of-way, that's gonna be a stretch for us to get. But on some of the other stuff, we, you know, we could build the masonry wall in the back or repair what's there.
The, the masonry wall in the back is a situation that we really don't have much of a problem with because it overlaps an existing sewer line, water line? Okay.
Yeah.
And that's one of the reasons it was granted before. The, the variances in total, even though you're, you're continuing to perpetuate them through this type of proposal, aren't the real issue. The real issue is the, the kiosk and the use, the subuses in the secondary buildings that are created on a lot, and what kind of effects that has on a lot, and whether there are variances or not. Virtually all of these may involve variances at some point in the future, because once you plant them in the middle of a lot, then you typically affect the interior parking, the interior landscaping, and so that's, again, one of the reasons, as well as the aesthetic issues that, that the gentleman has shown you, that we feel like it would be appropriate for it to be considered as a specific use. Which ones, again, is up to the, the P and Z and the council, but we need to kind of get a handle on how you're gonna deal with that, not, not to mention how many of these you're gonna allow on a lot, because this is one, but there's nothing to say there couldn't be a second one or a third one. So, there's a lot of, a lot more complexity to this than meets the eye.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Councilman Garina?
I am having a tough time with this one, because, but I see, I see Claude King's, City Manager King's, point of view here, and what we're trying to do. I'm gonna go ahead and go with the proposal here. I'm gonna go ahead and say that we, per the staff's recommendations, to deny these variances, but I also would like to have the planning and zoning committee take a bigger look at this also, and maybe if things change, to invite Mr. Ibarra to come back and reapply, if, if it changes in that, if they have favor of it.
Nika, can you tell us how fast you can get this, this revised ordinance proposal to the P and Z? I think you were getting pretty close, weren't you?
Yes, sir, we are getting very close. However, changes to the zoning ordinance do take time in general, just by virtue of having the public hearings and going before the planning and zoning commission, coming back before the council. I would say at a minimum, we're probably about two to three months off, at a minimum.
And he can always reapply at that point in time.
Say that again, sir?
He can always apply at that point in time.
Yeah, and I, it's just that he's paid to apply, and I'd hate for Nika to...
Well, the alternative would be just to table the request until after those revisions are considered by the council, and then reconsider his request in light of the decisions made at that time.
I tell you what, we're gonna, I think it'd be prudent to deny as the staff has requested, but let's get P and Z to look at it, and should Mr. Ibarra come back, he doesn't, I'd like to waive the fee that he would have to pay.
The fee waiver's not on the agenda, so that will have to be addressed at the time.
All right, we'll just ask for it next time.
So that I'm understanding, Councilman Garina keeps referring to this going back to P and Z. But there is another, more intensive step, and that is reworking the ordinance.
Yeah, actually, this case will not go to P and Z. This is not a zoning case, so you're either gonna rule on it or table it or whatever.
Okay.
What will, what will happen at the P and Z is exactly what you described, is the more intensive process of determining what modifications to make to the ordinance.
To the ordinance.
But this falls into all the special use permit conversation that we had during the retreat.
That's correct. Yes, yes.
Thank you.
All right. I move to deny.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to deny, and a second on that. Councilman Gilmore and, Councilman Garina on the, on the motion, and a second by Councilman Gilmore. I just wanted, did you, are you in a timeframe such that a three-month delay would knock you out anyway?
Well, we try to get the machines in by summer.
Sure.
My understanding is that we were gonna be able to put this machine in, so our customer ordered the machine, and, you know, it's being fabricated, and it's just really, when I found out that there was gonna be an issue, it really caught me off-guard, because we went through a three-month process getting everything in order and applying for variances. If we had ever thought that it was gonna be an issue not being allowed to set this building in Louisville, we would have foregone Louisville and moved somewhere else, and not, not spent the money, or ordered the machine.
I think it's a nice-looking building. I see them all over the place.
I agree, and this is, this is, you know, the best-looking one of any of them, probably nationwide of this, of this machine. 2,200 of them have been sold and installed around the world, and this is the best, the best model that there's out there.
Okay. Okay, we'll go ahead and vote here. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to, with a second, to deny the request. Is that correct?
That's what staff recommended, yeah, yes.
That's how I understand.
That's what staff recommended, it's what I made the motion on.
Yeah, so the motion is to deny the application.
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Nay. Motion carries four to one.
You know what? I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I was on the fence until just now. Make that two nays. I'm gonna vote nay on that. I think they should be able to do it. We've been doing it a lot, so, but that still fails, three to two, so...
Counsel, is that in order?
So you're withdrawing your vote? He made the mo, okay.
I made the motion for it, as, as it was written.
Can he withdraw the...
But I'm voting against it.
So the vote is now three to two?
Three to two, yes.
Can he, can he withdraw his motion?
Change his vote.
Change his vote.
Motion's still good.
Yes, can he do that? And then he said, can he withdraw his motion? After the vote?
No.
You can't withdraw your motion, but it's...
No, the motion's there.
Is that the answer?
Yeah. Can I have a second?
Okay.
Motion's fine. It still would have failed either way.
While she's thinking about it, if anybody else wants to vote nay, that's good.
Then that would go to the other way.
Yeah, that would be great, and we could get this going and start serving the community ice.
You're gonna build that very same building?
This very same building. We've already turned in the plans for this building and everything.
Gets credit for having sense of humor, at least.
This, this building, I, I think, would look great in that, in that parking lot that's vacant of anything, pretty.
Looks like it's failed.
For nay?
As far as keeping other businesses like this out of the community, I mean, it could be done just like this one, case by case, I guess, that's just...
Well, that's the purpose for the SU zoning...
Right.
...as well as to look at those types of structural and aesthetic issues that you described. It's, you're, you may be in fact setting a standard for the future.
And that would be great. I mean, that would be awesome.
But we don't want to be able to go through that process first.
Aye.
Anybody got the Jeopardy theme handy?
Even if I, even if I made the opposite vote, uh, motion...
Okay.
Hold on a second, okay, counsel?
After the, a member has the right to change his vote up to the time the vote is finally announced, and you finally announce the vote.
Yes.
So after that, he can make the change only by permission of the council, which may be given by general consent. That is, no member objecting when the chair inquires if anyone objects.
Okay. Does anybody object?
I do not.
No objection?
No objection.
Still fails anyway.
No objection.
I just, bizarrely, things.
Okay, so this changed three to two, and it's, still passes to deny. Thanks, sir.
One last question. Where does this leave me, then, with our customer? Can we, let's say he finds some deep, deep pockets? Can we still move forward with the construction as long as we adhere to all those variance requests that we're trying to?
Under the current ordinance, if you wanted to try to develop the property without any variances, it would be a different situation.
That, that's my question.
But, well, I think you might want to talk with staff a little bit first and, and weigh out your, your options before you jump to that conclusion.
Right.
Because, again, if we can get the ordinance resolved within the next three or four months, then you'd be submitting a new application.
Got it.
Counselman Garina?
Just wanted to clarify for you, sir, that the whole thing was about denying the variances.
That's right, yeah. I understand.
So that really means that the answer right now is no on that. I'm sorry to have confused people, but I was on the fence up until now, but even if the way it goes, the variances are denied, so it's no on that.
Right.
I would recommend you talking with staff before you go any further...
Absolutely.
...and seeing which way to go on that.
Can someone get with him tonight to talk to him?
Yeah, I think Eric and Nika can team up.
Okay.
Or Patia, yeah, whichever.
Somebody will.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Number nine, consideration of a Brownfields Assessment Program Application For The Property At 1288 West Main, Block A, Lot One. Comments, the owner of 1288 West Main Street, located within the Old Orchard East Shopping Center, has submitted an application for participation in the Brownfields Program. Plans For The Property Include Demolition Of The Vacant Space Previously Occupied By Walmart And Hobby Lobby, As Well As The Area Currently Used By Tuesday Morning And Hancock Fabrics. The demolition portion of the project will be reconstructed as an 85,000-foot building to be occupied by a single tenant. Preliminary research has revealed the presence of gasoline stations within, gasoline stations with leaking underground storage tanks, as well as several dry cleaners within the vicinity of the subject property. In addition, the building was originally constructed in the '70s and likely contains asbestos. Project Team Recommends That The City Council Approve Site Assessment Activities Eligible For Funding According To EPA Guidelines. The Brownfields Advisory Committee Recommended Approval Of This Brownfields Assessment Program Application By Vote Of 5-0 At Its Meeting On March 20, 2012. Recommendation Is That The City Council Approve The Brownfields Assessment Program Application For The Property At 1288 West Main Street, Block A, Lot One. Is there any other staff comments on this?
No.
Okay. Councilman Gilmore?
Nice to see some work being done on this property. I move to approve as stated.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Gilmore, and a second by Councilman Garina. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Item 10, consideration of upcoming meeting dates for the city budget process. Comments Are The City Staff Has Provided A Calendar Showing The Important Upcoming Dates For The Council Meetings Regarding The City Budget Process. Budget Workshop Is Recommended To Be Scheduled For August 11. Recommendation Is That City Council Review The Proposed Calendar Direct City Staff Regarding Any Necessary Changes And Adopt The Calendar. Councilman Ferguson?
I move to approve the August 11 date.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Ferguson, and a second by Councilman Vaughn. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Item 11, consideration of a request for the city in-kind support for the American Cancer Society Relay For Life Event Located At The Louisville High School Harmon Campus, 1250 West Round Grove Road As Requested By Casey Miller, Event Chair, Southeast Denton County Relay For Life. Comments Are The 2012 Southeast Denton County Relay For Life Event Will Be Held From Friday, Friday, May 4, 2012 At 7:00 p.m. To Saturday, May 5, 2012 At 7:00 a.m. A Request Is Being Made To A, Provide City In-Kind Support For Eight Tents And Staff Time To Erect And Dismantle Tents Related To The Event, And B, To Waive Any Associated Fees For The Event, Including Fees For Personnel To Erect And Dismantle Tents. City Council, City Council Approval For The Request For The Event Last Year, oh, excuse me, we approved the request last year.
Mayor Protem, I serve on this board, so I'm gonna just step out while you guys make a decision.
Thank you. Recommendation Is That The City Council Consider The Request For In-Kind Support For The for the American Cancer Society Relay for Life event as set forth in the caption above. Councilman Vaughn?
Mayor, I make a motion that the city council approve the request for in-kind support for the American Cancer Society Relay for Life event as set forth in the caption above.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Vaughn to approve and a second by Councilman Ferguson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Councilman Gilmore, you can come back now. And thank you for your service on this committee. Very worthy cause. Item number 12, consideration of an ordinance approving an amendment to the retail delivery service tariff of Texas New Mexico Power Company to provide the recovery in non-bypassable charges for a franchise fee on discretionary service charges. Comments, in the development of the new franchise with Texas New Mexico Power Company, the city negotiated provision to pay franchise fee for discretionary services provided by the company. Discretionary fees include connection charges, disconnect or reconnect charges, outdoor lighting charges, tampering charges, and other service charges. During development of the franchise agreement, it was believed PUC regulatory authority was needed to develop the franchise fee for discretionary services. However, since the city is the regulatory authority with ongoing jurisdiction, inclusion of franchise fee payment for discretionary services can be accomplished by ordinance by amending the retail delivery service tariff.
That was me, sorry.
Okay, recommendation is that the city council approve the ordinance as captioned above. Councilman Gilmore? First of all, is there any staff comments on this?
No.
Is anybody here to speak on this?
Move to approve as captioned.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve from Councilman Gilmore, a second by Councilman Garina. All those in favor signify.
Mayor Protem?
Oh, excuse me. Somebody didn't read this deal over here on my favor either.
This is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Lewisville, Texas, approving an amendment to the retail delivery service tariff of Texas New Mexico Power Company to provide for recovery in non-bypassable charges for franchise fees on discretionary service charges pursuant to the franchise granted to Texas New Mexico Power Company in ordinance number 3927-02-212, finding that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed is open to the public, providing for repealer, providing for severability, providing an effective date in declaring an emergency.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Number 13, consideration of declaring a vacancy in place number five on the Old Town Design Review Committee, and consideration of an appointment to fill the vacancy on the OTDRC. Comments, in accordance with the city council's attendance policy, Gloria Perzona, Perzosa has missed three consecutive meetings of the OTDRC and is automatically removed from the membership on this committee. Recommendation is that the city council consider declaring a vacancy on, in place number five on the OTDRC and consider an appointment to fill the vacancy. Councilman Ferguson?
Just a comment here, I've gotten to know Kelly. She's an Old Town resident. She has a business here. Her husband has a business in Old Town. They are Old Town. And I've gotten to know her through OTVA, and so I am very much going to be in favor of her filling this vacancy. So with that, I'd like to move that we declare vacancy in place five and recommend Ms. Kelly like all for that position. Second.
We have a, a motion to approve as requested, or as recommended here by Councilman Ferguson, and a second by, by Councilman Garina. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Don't forget, she's got a great eye for design, too.
Yeah.
Item 14, consideration of a variance to the Lewisville City Code, Section 2-201, regarding waiving special event fees, and consideration of a request to utilize the Wayne Ferguson Plaza for the Greater Lewisville Amazing Race, as requested by Matt McCormick, President of the Lewisville Area Chamber of Commerce. Administrative comments, the Lewisville Area Chamber of Commerce each year hosts the Leadership Lewisville class. As part of the class graduation, an event is planned to promote Lewisville. This year's event is the Greater Lewisville Amazing Race. The chamber is using the Medical Center of Lewisville Grand Theater Courtyard area for the pre-race registration from 1:00 p.m. to 2:15 p.m., and staged the post-race celebration at the Ferguson Plaza location from 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. on Saturday, April 21, 2012. Council is being requested to waive all fees associated with the event. Fees for this event are expected to be $15.50? Proceeds from the event benefit the Old Town Business Association, Keep Lewisville Beautiful, Christian Community Action, and the Salvation Army, and the Lewisville Education Foundation. In addition, council action is required to utilize the Ferguson Plaza for a special event as it, as it is city-owned. In addition, fees associated with the MCL Grand Theater use will be offset by volunteer hours as authorized by the existing fee schedule for the facility. Recommendation is that the city council approve the request as set forth in the caption above. The staff have comments on this? There was some discussion in the workshop.
Yes, Counsel, the, I talked to Matt earlier today, and it looks like they will not need to use the MCL Grand Theater as they had previously planned, and so you would still just need to consider the waiver of the permit fee as well as the use of Ferguson Plaza.
What is the permit fee and the?
The permit fee is the $15.50.
And what is the other fee? Is that, are you talking about the $156?
The $156 would have been for use of the MCL Grand Theater, but we usually don't waive that fee. They do volunteer hours in lieu of that.
Right.
And so they're just not going to use the MCL Courtyard because they don't need to use it now.
Okay. So did you tell me what the other fee was?
It's the permit fee.
Oh.
Special event permit fee.
Okay.
Could we get Mr. McCormick up to explain?
Sorry.
We also have Lisa Hermes?
Yes, she's our VP. Unfortunately, she ran out ill, and I was at my son's baseball game before this, so I didn't know if I was going to be able to make it. Matt McCormick with the Lewisville Chamber. Actually, we still do need to use the courtyard. I apologize. We, what my message was, actually, and I misspoke, I think, is that the group will actually pay the $156, use the courtyard in lieu of, instead of doing the volunteer trade-outs with them. So that is, sorry. That's my fault.
So the application is, we're back to where we started with the original application?
Except you're not offering volunteer hours. You're going to pay.
Okay. Councilman Vaughn?
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the use of Ferguson Plaza and the MCL Grand Courtyard, and in lieu of what was requested, that hours be worked instead of paying the fee, that the chamber will now pay the use fee instead of working. Yes. And additionally, we're waiving the event fee. I think that.
Before we get a second on that, I want to see if that.
Second.
Does that cover everything? Okay. We have a, a motion from, by Councilman Vaughn, and a second by Councilman Garina?
I thought you were asking for a second there, for a second. Yeah.
Yes. And y'all have heard it. I'm not going to try to read it and go back through it, so. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Good luck with that. Down to reports. Nika? Chief? Excuse me, Tim, sorry. Ms. Kelly?
If I could, I'd like to invite the, y'all in the community to Denton County Crime Victims' Week Event. This will be right here in Old Town at the MCL Grand Theater, and it is Monday, April 23rd, and it's 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Okay, thank you.
We still have a full lake, and we're above conservation by about half a foot.
Okay. I see them. Go ahead. Anything?
Aaron, Counsel, we have lots of great things going on at the MCL Grand Theater as always. The one I do want to point out, though, is on April 25th, we've got a concert put on by the Rumble Kings. This will be in the courtyard of the theater. It's open to the public at, and it starts at 7:00, but at 6:30 p.m., we're actually going to have a special reception for our volunteers. So we have volunteers throughout the city, certainly as well as our board and commission members, and so we'll have some very light refreshments. But again, we just want to use that opportunity to say thank you to all of our volunteers.
Thank you. Ms. Martin? First? Okay. Ms. Backus? Councilman Garina?
No, sir, I have nothing.
Okay. Councilman Gilmore?
We have a medical disposal day coming up on April 28th. It's going to be at the LHS parking lot. Recommend that y'all get those meds that are outdated sitting there in your cabinet and don't just flush them down the toilet. Lots of studies are showing that that stuff is coming back into our water supply, and at some point, it's going to be very expensive to remove it because it will be mandated that it gets removed. So let's just eliminate it altogether and bring it over to LHS on the 28th.
Counselor Garina?
Oh, no, I was just going to, trying to say to you, Ms. Julie Heinze, when, comes around about voting, so that's all. Sorry.
Ms. King? Councilperson?
Always have something else to add on the grand. It seems LISD is still doing its art show at the grand. That'll continue through April 30th. Right now, they have the elementary schools in there. I've seen it. It'll blow you away what these elementary school kids can do. April 21st, Civic Corral will be performing foray and rudder's requiem. I've actually sung both of these requiem, so I'm familiar with them, and I can tell you, they are amazing. So that'll be at the grand, 7:00 p.m. on the 21st. We've got several other things coming up, including Milk Drive's concert on the 28th. That'll happen before the next council meeting, so I'll go ahead and mention that. And don't forget, 7:00 p.m. on Fridays, Acoustic Friday's Free Jam Session in the Art Gallery, and 8:00 p.m. till midnight, the swing dance lessons. I'm told no acrobatics, so you won't get tossed in the air. So consider going to that. Okay?
Counselor Vaughn?
No, sir.
Secretary?
Just a reminder that, I'm not sure my mind, I got it. Just a reminder that early voting for the May 12 election starts on April 30th. Early voting will be conducted over at the municipal annex. Also, you may all want to watch, check out your precinct numbers, because all precinct numbers have changed now. Instead of three digits, we're now four digits, so that will be a change.
Okay. Is the city of Lewisville all voting in one spot this year?
We're all, early voting at the municipal annex. However, we still have three polling locations on election day, and everyone, for the most part, will go back to the polling locations that they've gone to in past years.
And, and there are two different elections in May, correct? For the city on one, and then?
Yeah. May 12th is the city election. May 29th will be the primary election. And early voting for the primary election will start on May the 14th, and early voting will be conducted at the annex also for that election.
Okay, but they are, the school board is voted?
City and school together on May 12.
And the county and state issues are?
May 29.
And the federal?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. It isn't confusing enough, as it is. Next item is closed session in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, 1, Section 551.072, property acquisition, and 2, Section 551.087, economic development deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. We are now adjourned into closed session. Okay.
Move to adjourn.
Call back into session. Is there any action to be taken?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
A motion to adjourn is second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Who seconded that motion?
We both did.
Give it to first, that's all right. It's late.
You got it?
Got it, thanks.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Good night.